Buddy to the. You know, I gotta work on that.
Yeah.
Welcome everybody again to the Thursday December eight city council work session. All those that adopted the agenda always a favor, please say hi.
Hi.
Hey. That's nasty. Council discussion first up is ordinance top sixty one adopting the compost procurement policy. Public works directly to us all about that. All right, everybody. Thank you so much for having me. Uh, yeah, tonight we are having to adopt the. Uh, when I spoke sixty one compost procurement policy. Basically, what. As far as to do is just and as far as finding ways to. Plant practically practical and feasible compost into our work, whether it be our maintenance, construction. Or N P D S. Processes also. Again, there's no some timelines that have provided for that. Uh, but there is some end of year reporting that we will do. And we currently do several designs already. For example, with the green bear. We like the importance of compost. Sometimes we work a seed growth to get up. Either compost or coupons for that. As well as we do. Provide periodic articles within our. Uh, N P D S environmental articles that we put out for for news. And compost is purchased for for city events and other volunteer activities. So we do that already. So there's some things that we already do. And it's just, uh, again, trying to effectively. And make that. A little more formalized if you will. That's pretty straightforward. Sending questions to now that's any questions about compost.
No, but I'll just, I'll just make a comment. A lot of cities are are seem to be struggling to actually do this. And so I have shared our. Our proposed ordinance for the few people who said, oh, very helpful. Thank you. Well. Amazing. So, uh, thank you very much, Jeff, for putting this together. I'm a big fan of this, obviously, getting on my work over the years on solid waste. And, um, this helps create that circular economy where. We put back what we have taken out. So. Let's just all get all those leaves and branches back into our yards. People hand onto the city park, but not our rightways and everywhere else. So. Uh, thank you very much for getting this going and getting such time in there.
Maybe I was worried you have anything to add. Yes.
Uh, just a question about the language around priority purchasing. Do you know off the top of your head or with the research you've done, uh, how many companies satisfy? Um, the requirement for the suggested. Uh, the, the. What is asking for?
This is so new. I do not specifically know. Check, but I think so you wrote something one.
For sure, yeah.
And, um, so the top one might. Yeah, that's primarily two.
Yeah. So initially, there's no concerns about not having kind of an open process. Make sure that we're following the law but not breaking the law. Wow, how hard could that be? Uh, but thank you. If you can check on that.
Yes.
Yeah, this all seems really reasonable and useful. I'm just curious. So when Republic picks up our yard waste from the curb, where did it go? And are they one of the sources that the city can buy from?
Great question.
It goes to Cedar Grove. And they have a big, uh, processing plant in the eastern half of the county. And, um, they sell it back. And if you go to places like Fred Meyer, you can see big bags with seedings already written on. But that is one of them in suppliers in the area. There's also another one in Snohomish County. It's name I'm forgetting right now, but.
Cedar Grove has a distribution and more that now one now. It is gonna be between Redmond or Kirkland. He was standing down by the river bottom. So they got a few. Okay, any other questions or jumping? Okay. So now we'll move on to a resolution eighteen seventy nine authorized American Science Service Agreement with Pet Tree Landscape Incorporated. For their twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three tree service. Take away. All right, thank you. Well, with this, I've got two. Two banks to look at. One is resolution to sign the contract and second request at some point would be to. Uh, two, two separate initiatives. My resolution to send it being a, and the second one is to. Right. Right on the invoice seven. From January one. Twenty two to the thirty. As much as we love our trees, they do sometimes die, fall down and cause other issues, especially all their storms and whatnot. And we, and use a contractor pet. Had stream last evening and. I think they started back in two thousand. Any timeframe person very different name though. Particularly, we, and we call them for emergencies that we have the trees from the roadways or dead trees. We identify those. That's problematic and it was the, to the world for us. This year, we identified a. Our expenses exceeding what we normally would see. Losing in actual, but we had the fifty thousand dollar. And obviously, our ordinances, resolutions were required to do anything over thirty thousand. For contracts fifty for public works. Turns out this, this type of work is actually a purchase surface, which is not. A public most charging contract. So it'd be a thirty thousand dollar threshold. So we exceed thirty thousand dollars threshold earlier in the year. But we thought it was a full box. Contract, which went up to two thousand. So that's kind of. Obviously, with the recent storm too, we there has different costs associated with that. So two, you know, number thirtieth. Right about seventy seven thousand dollars. True. Were. Pass, pass three against game. So. What we did to rectify that was to immediately get contract going, put out the bid. The two bidders. Submit for that project and Pats was the lower of the two. One, one person cannot bid on the project. So we did reach out to three. So what we'd like to do is get that contract in place with pass them forward and get ratified, I think, was just that we're. And how we're from January one through November thirty. As part of that process. So we have a contract in place going forward next year. Again, value of that is is pretty not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. And that's, again, that's not called project contract. Questions? Yes.
So this covers that kind of urgent and emergent work as well as like regular pre-priming and maintenance or just more the emergency?
Primarily the emergency. Maybe a case on a timely basis. Some smaller projects like that primarily is situation of being a storm. Or someone identifies a dead tree. Just like I. May trees. Uh, for the storm, he has thirty locations, twenty five. Just trees by themselves and other five locations building properly. Yeah, there's just this last storm. So that's very amazing. Yes.
Thank you. And, and so this is getting just something that I've been sort of worried about for some time. I think we're, we're in a situation where we both have increased weather events, but we also have an aging tree population. And, um. So I, I'm not at all surprised that, you know, our costs are going up here and that we're in need of more assistance. But I'm also concerned that we need to keep an eye on this because it may in fact. Grow at a faster rate than we've ever experienced. And so I, I just, I just wanted. Get that on the table. So everybody is really realizing that because. We've got a lot of trees in right ways and so. On seeing property that are old.
And if you're more climate change, it's certainly changing.
Absolutely.
Situation here, the, the drugs from last two years, two summers.
Unhealthy at rest. So they're both aging and not as healthy as they once were.
Yes. I'm also just curiosity. If a tree is in somebody's backyard, but it gets knocked over in a way that's blocking the road. Is that the homeowner's responsibility or is that the city?
The city will go in there and clear it right away and you'll see the tree and the branches to the side and then all of it.
So generally what happens is a tree falls. Wherever it lands, it becomes a property of the. So I had a tree that fell on my neighbor's property. Well, that tree now became their property. But I went and had it removed because. So. Not where it comes from, it's where.
Yes, Doc. Just one quick question, and this is. Tremendous discussion, but something you can bookmark for next year potentially. There's a great article in the Seattle Times about, uh, sort of the. Ecosphere of what happens to volunteer trees after. They are cut up or they're, they're removed. There's a quite, quite a burgeoning, burgeoning business in Seattle of saving hardwoods and using slabs and. Cutting up some things and beams and lumber and things like that. And my understanding is that generally these contracts don't include things that they need to be responsibly trying to save. The trees for. Use down the line as, or you know, give them to a third party or sell them to a third party so they can be used as part of. Beautiful table or lumber or whatever else. But I think as time goes on, that's a policy that we need to think about. Encouraging them rather than to just chop it up and then fire it or rip it through the. The small, the smaller pieces are going to go to the chipper, but the, the, the larger pieces, the larger trees would be great for them. To be able to keep it in length, that would be so solid. Were us slabs.
That's John. A couple of questions. I noticed that Pat's tree didn't fill out the bid form correctly. Did you guys go through and correct that?
You guess that.
So you, you ran out the extension.
Yes, it's determined they were the boat better.
Yes. The other is, it was not fair to me, and maybe I'm just looking at the little one. In the staff recommend, recommendation, there is the item here to. Recognize the tree service as generally emergency unpredictable and move to ratify the expenditures from January twenty twenty two. But I didn't see a resolution for. For that. So it's not clear to me what we're actually asked, being asked to do. The staff recommended it, but I didn't see any paperwork that would suggest that we take any action. But do we need to even take any action because the expenditures are being approved by the council at each of the meetings anyway?
Him thought it best that you do a motion to ratify these measures January one to November thirty. Just even though you're approving it, it's just acknowledging the fact that.
Exceeded.
We exceeded the mayor's signing authority. And so it's just an acknowledgement, even though you're correcting or approving the bills. She felt it would be appropriate to acknowledge the fact that. This occurred and now we're putting this contract in place to set us up. You could ask her that question. That was the recommendation.
And on point, I would have said.
Yeah.
Go figure.
Yeah.
I mean, it's always been a route that I was. I was keeping.
And yes. Between November thirtieth and December thirty first, is that an issue? Because it's not under this current. Contract. What is the contract starts in January, right? Have you looked at it? Oh, no.
The, the contract that we have. Starts December first.
December first. Okay, I missed that. Thank you for that.
Lori, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't. Thank you very much. Um, and I apologize for joining late and being online. I've got a. Bad cold that's not a COVID cold. So I don't have COVID, but I am sick. So. Thank you. I appreciate all the questions and comments and, uh. Nothing to add.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess. For leave trees, one, our new arborist started this last week and. There's yourself. Remember, if you have anybody dealing with trees, the tree that our arborists respect. And she didn't make the rules. You guys did, actually. So make sure people know that. And we really probably, I don't know how we're good because it's the hardest subject in town. We might need to have. A tree forum actually bigger than the tree board actually have. People that actually really have to start thinking about exactly what you're talking about. We need to manage our forest. Not just one big double forest. We have people that think a lot different, but we are going to have to make some. I move that forward to a, a working relationship because. You know, that may trees go down and it really wasn't that terrible, the storm, you know, it's just the combination of stuff. So a lot to think about. With that, I'm going to take you off the hot seat, bring Andy in. And he'll spend his first half hour telling about how much sleep he gets nowadays with your baby. So.
We're gonna have it.
Baby slept seven and a half hours straight plus. Oh, it's a sweet relief. Yeah. It's up to you. It's great. Yes. Yes, so. Just wanted to do it. No, yeah. So we have a, um, a draft resolution. We wanted to discuss with, uh, members. Uh, regarding a proposed amendment to a design contract we have set up with transportation solutions. And that's for design of the. Roundabout project at state with one or four and forty of place on the east. So. Rather sizable amendment. And so there's a. There's a long story, uh, behind it. I'll try to. I, I tried in the cover sheet to give you the highlights of it. I have to expand on. Any part of the fuller explanation that's provided in the amendment document itself, if you're interested, but. Um, I think the. Are writing a headline about what has occurred. Or what has changed about the project that has driven this cost increase. Uh, mainly it's that the. The estimated cost to construct the project is significantly higher, you know, upward to fifty percent higher than what was assumed. When this design contract was executed. And that's an increase in construction cost being created by just an increased size of the project, uh, additional improvements that are needed. Beyond, and again, those, those initial assumptions. And so. You know, the, just to put real numbers to it, our. Our original construction cost estimate. Uh, that our, uh, former city engineer prepared was about two point two million. And the engineers estimated. And engineers estimate a probable construction cost at sixty percent design where we are now. Uh, it's about three point six billion. So it's, you know. A little, little higher than fifty, fifty percent. Higher. And there's a, it's about a commensurate increase in the design fee. And it's not as simple as, you know. Construction contract up fifty percent bigger there for the design fee up fifty percent bigger. Those, you know. It's a lot more, uh. To explain where each of these sources of digital cost came from. But. If I were to condense it down into, you know, nutshell, that's, that's sort of the, the main story here. In the cover sheet, uh, I did give you a, like, sort of, uh, tried to break down of this total. Suggested increase in the fee, which was, I think, a little over three hundred and sixty thousand. What accounted for the majority of that cost? I think I think of the three things that, you know, comprised. Uh, three quarters of the increase. So those were, you know. You know, uh, just briefly, that, that increased footprint, which drives the need for significantly larger. Retaining walls for the project. Those require specialized design. Represents a order of magnitude greater stormwater impact or requires a whole. It's a separate category of stormwater permitting and stormwater improvements that have to happen to mitigate the impacts that you're making. I think the initial assumption in the contract was that. Uh, additional impervious surface on the project would be limited to less than, less than the threshold that requires these, uh, higher levels of review. And this, you know. We're, we're well above that. So there's, there's a need to design. Stormwater flow control ball, but one quality devices and. Yeah, one more detail. In the design and also permitting effort that that was in that happen. And then there's significantly. It changes what our right of way acquisition ever looks like, you know, the amount of properties that are affected. Uh, the area that's affected. Utility related. Events that you'll be acquired that, that weren't accounted for initially. That, that's all driven by that larger project footprint and then higher cost. Um, the second thing was there's this, um. There was an omission of, uh, tree private support for securing that a tree removal permit from the city, which as it turns out is pretty significant effort. We need to engage an arborist, um, have. Trees that would be affected by the project. Located. Uh, by, by our survey team, our special coordination between designers and the permitting specialists to sort, sort out. What the, what the impacts look like and. How our design might need to be, uh, modified in order to be able to obtain that permit. So that's, that's a sick, you know, those costs that, that amounted to about thirteen percent of the, uh. That three hundred and sixty thousand dollar total. And then the last thing is just project management cost to manage this larger body of design work is, uh, is itself fairly significant. And I, that was around forty thousand. So, so those are the, um, those are, I, I suppose the highlights of. But what comprises this increase and, um. You know, the, just based on our recognition of. The higher construction cost, we've already been in fundraising mode for some time, you know, seeking additional funding to, uh. You know, to, to fully fund the project. Couple of our efforts are, are still pending. We don't know the fate of those just yet, but, um. This, this increase in particular can be supported by a transfer from the fund balance to. To the account, you know, supporting the project. And then, you know. What, what sort of shortfall there may ultimately exist. Uh, to the project sort of depends on how these, these funding. Pursuits. I think I'll stop there. If you have any questions, questions, council, yes. That's very castle.
Thank you very much. Um, and as somebody who's been, you know, watching this from the, its inception, um. We saw in the early planning stages, some, some sort of, you know, maps, diagrams of. Of the size of the, of the project and of the potential. Probably acquisitions and I myself would be very interested to see how that has changed. Um. I think the council needs to be fully, um, apprised of this before. Getting more letters from people who are unhappy about property acquisitions. So, um. Uh, I'd be very interested to see that. And, and, you know, obviously. There's probably no reason for us to dig into, you know, what happened and why is it the way it's going to be, you know, it is, I guess. What it is now. So I just would really like to, to see something on paper about what, what's going to look like, you know, with this larger footprint.
Actually, I already have that. I didn't have it prepared in time to include with these materials, but I, yeah, we didn't. That's, uh, that's something we can.
Yeah, a couple of questions. One. Was the tree removal permit cost overrun because they didn't include enough or because they didn't include it in the original contract?
What? It was not included.
It was not included. Okay. And then are any of these changes related to state regulations, wash stock type stuff? Or was it simply a geometric? It needed to be the way it is?
The. The change in what is required for stormwater management is driven by the N P D S permit. You know, the, there are thresholds defined. It's that originate there and then are. Sort of take their own sort of slightly different form in the county's surface water design manual. And we also have slight patients to that manual that R B S will code. But, but yes, it starts with the state like there. Those other two standards can't be any less stringent than the states. So. That's one of, I mean, that's the, that's the thing that leads to mine as far as state driven. Cost increases. There is all, there's a, it's a fairly modest additional cost in here for. Traffic control plan, uh, preparation that is the level of effort that. Is being required currently, uh, is, and we think this has something to do with the. New state traffic engineer. Exceeds what Wash Duck has required in the past. And I think that amount to, you know, four thousand dollars is not. You know, the, uh, client share of this, anyways, but, but it's a. It is one of the assumptions that have not. You know. That. Yeah, actual conditions have deviated from assumptions on that.
So there's some possibility that this cost could change yet again, the longer it takes us to get funding for it as possibly some of these other requirements get updated. But it seems like an unlikely situation as those don't change very often. But they could.
It, it is, it is a risk, you know, that, um. The. It, it, you know. Prolonging, uh, delivery schedules, yeah, more things can change about, um. The conditions that were in place and used as the base of assumptions when you, when you start the work and when you estimate the fee. So in general, yes, there, there is that risk, but. Terms of like regulations changing, um. Yeah, I think, um. Well, I, I, I've experienced firsthand how that is a, um, that is a process. And so it doesn't, doesn't happen overnight. So maybe lower risk, um, on that front.
First would be reduced greatly. We could get to like a permit stage, but are we funded through permit documents?
We have enough money to complete design for sure. The, the funding shortfall, you know. Uh, for the project, you know, currently I think we're looking at around one point two million. If we were. Spending every dollar that we had as costs were approved, we run out of money somewhere, you know, two thirds of the way through construction.
Thank you.
It's never fun to come with bad news, but I, I appreciate you telling us upfront about the ongoing challenges. Now, I have a question now. Later tonight, we're, we'll be voting on our legislative agenda. And in the agenda, one of the items is nine hundred thousand for the roundabout. Do we need to update that number in light of the increased footprint and increased construction costs?
Good. Want me to take that? We would love to. We actually had that served larger. This process, but our lobbyists suggested and based on past practice of mass success. Nine hundred thousand, that automatically is going to be the first threshold. What we, you know. Um, we've had to back away from ass of one point two thousand. Yes, I think that's what we started. So there was really not a plot there to. We, we might put ourselves out of contention. We ask for more. There's always that opportunity when we speak with them as we go through the session, the same. You know, that's our ask and be happy to figure the rest out. But if you have a few extra dollars you want to throw our way, it's not. You will happily take that. And we've made that pitch.
It's been successful.
Yes, I mean, definitely, man, for it. You're in person tonight. So.
I am the French actual here. Um, thank you. This is a great presentation and like, uh, Vice Sir Casa for the water to the bridge up where, how we got here. When you talk about a larger footprint, my mind, I mean, it was, I know that corner that intersection very well goes to some of those. Giant trees that are there. Where are the impacts? And maybe it's subject to having, you know, she usually asks about, about the, the new drawing. Uh, and we could defer the conversation to them if you prefer, but I just, I, I want to make sure that we're ahead of this and we're thinking about what the impacts are to.
Yeah, um, so in this, in the roundabout is having like four quadrants, you know, one of these. The. The largest expansion.
Could you speak up a little bit, please? Hard. It's getting hard to hear both of you.
Sure. Uh, so. The, the, the quadrants, if you envision the roundabout as sort of like being divided into four quadrants. The areas where the project footprint extends. The areas where the project footprint extends furthest beyond what was assumed, you know, based on the the renderings and the safe highways report twenty eighteen are in the northeast and southeast quadrants. So it's um, okay, actually like northeast one eighty fourth street, some of the slope.
And yes, and to the where the big Laurel edge.
Yes, I think this long, that's right. Okay. Right. So, okay, northeast one eighty fourth uh enters the intersection, you know, from the east. So it's the area on the north and south side of of that right way. Okay, one, oh, one eighty four, I apologize.
Are you getting this, Laurie?
Can you hear Laurie?
Yes, sorry. I was shaking my head at someone else.
I, I think just, just for the record, I think we all need to speak kind of towards the screen and towards the park rather than each other. I apologize, Laurie. Let us know if you can't hear us. Uh, okay, that, that gives me some confidence that, you know, because we can not worry about it until we actually see the the drawing. So thank you for that, Andy.
And to your comment or question about like the the tree impacts, we will know soon uh what, what trees, if you really need that arborist assessment of, you know, the viability of the tree, how the limit of work conflicts with the interior root zones of each tree. And they'll be able to give us a, you know, their assessment of which trees can survive with tree protection measures which must be removed. In which case, by the way, will be required to replace them. I believe that one to one ratio, granted, you're planting a, a young tree in place of, you know, potentially a, you know, what much more to surgery. So I'm not waiting in kind of placement, but in any case, the, the, the extent of the impact can be determined, but but shortly and I'll be able to come back to you and share what those impacts look like soon. Thank you.
Yes. Oh, thank you. A couple of questions. Just going back, was the original cost or fee developed based upon the safe highways or did they do their own preliminary study before they gave us the fee? The reason I'm asking is this increase is significant and a roundabout, I'm constructing a roundabout right now. But at six million dollars in our design fees were eight hundred thousand dollars for a much larger project. And I'm trying to understand, does this consultant, are they looking far enough ahead? So is the original fee based upon safe highways or did they actually do their own studies before it? Because I'm trying to assess, are we gonna get another bill later on? Because this is a fairly large increase and I want to understand if they have the foresight to understand what they need to do for this kind of project. Cutting down trees was always part of the program.
So I'll give you my understanding based on the story I'm told, because I was a hero, the contract was executed, I didn't negotiate it. But it, in essence, yes, the, the assumptions, the key assumptions that informed what this project would cause, you know, sort of started with. What was the what was the illustration of the scale of the project based on the safe highways for? That report didn't include cost estimates that the consultant, that that just wasn't part of the scope of that study apparently. And so I, I believe that the former city engineers cost estimate that was used for grant applications, for instance, was available by then. So those two gave some indication of the scale of, you know, design effort that would be required. And then, you know, the consultant's original scope does, you know, does kind of go through a you know, pretty detailed exercise of describing based on the site context and exactly what we're building, you know, which, which specific efforts are needed. It wasn't sort of like a apply a rough percentage based on, you know, these high level figures and, and that's our, our proposed fee. They didn't, they didn't have a kind of like an itemized list of services and and costs that you know, there were several assumptions baked in there that have have not proven to be true. Perhaps there are, you know, assumptions that are a little too optimistic. And then in some cases, there were just changes that I think could not have been anticipated based on what they knew at the time. So it's a make sure both of those impacts that is like to those increase.
Is roundabouts are fairly prescriptive in terms of the size needed for them, given the intersection and speed, size of traffic that would be running through there. So I'm a little disappointed that the consulting team couldn't look at it and say, you need a carry up this much to put a roundabout that has a traffic speed of this. It's fairly prescriptive.
And to your other point on the trees, I mean, yeah, we all know we have a tree or as I walk through this and yeah, it's the level of detail was not included in that, it should still work. And so it left they too much question for anybody bidding on that project. Understand exactly the level of restrictions, requirements the city has for trees, because we walked that through that pretty tightly, because that was my concern. How can we not? No, liver impacts trees. I think it's the level of study, the arborists, things like that, that just were not in the original just the detail wasn't there. I, I take a little issue that they didn't do enough work to get there, but I think as well and not providing information of that call to
Well, this wasn't, the, the design services weren't there. They were procured and negotiated assume because you're not permitted to build design services. So a negotiated services within a municipality that firm should be familiar with the ordinance's requirements for that municipality. So part of where I'm going is, do we have confidence that this firm? This isn't the last change order that we're gonna get from this firm because they now realize there are other things they need to do. Because one of the comments in here is that you are gonna take more property to do this. Um, but there's no increase in the right of way services needed to take that. So is the assumption is that that's already covered or are we gonna get another change order?
So the one of the larger, I, I think the, the majority of the increased right of way support that we need under this contract, it's, it's not negotiation with more property owners. That would be the subject of the right of way acquisition consultancy. It's the amount of legal descriptions exhibits that would be needed. One of the, one of the optimistic or you prefer core assumptions at the original scope is that the surveyor would need to produce one document, one, one, one set of legal descriptions and exhibits that would serve both temporary and permanent, but temporary construction needs purposes and permanent right of way acquisition things. And yeah, you're saying, because you know, the, the Chinese many areas has to be larger, you know, the contractor is gonna need more room. We're not gonna purchase that entire area that they're gonna be working in. So it effectively doubled, you know, the amount of those types of documents that now need to be produced. The other, I think, major change was some the, as we worked with Seattle City Lights to determine what whole relocations they find acceptable, they specified that they need, you know, I think it's just guy wire and and locations that have to enter onto private property that, you know, it's kind of a a hard specific detail to see coming. Uh, and maybe they could have assumed that something like that would be necessary knowing that poles would have to move, but wasn't included. So what we determine now, I mean, I think your overall question, we're we're at sixty percent design, I think a consultant should know much better at that point, have a much more reliable sense of what level of evidence is needed. I would be, I, I, I was surprised by the magnitude of this request to be, to be candid with you. And in fact, the original request was larger than this and we scaled it back, you know, where we're appropriate. And I would not expect to receive, you know, an additional request anywhere near this magnitude even percentage wise. And I've had the honest conversation with the consultant about, you know, the, the need to well, does, you know, to communicate better on these types of expectations. And so there's, yeah, it's, it's, it's hard, it's hard to offer assurance about what the future holds, you know, or for their performance, but yeah, I think the, I think the team has a, has a verve of grasp of what is, what is needed at this point, that I get at the start. So I, I, I sense that the risk of this sort of thing happening, yeah, it's as much more.
Just because I haven't followed it as long, are they in sixty percent or are they completed sixty percent?
Yeah, their, their past six is sort of between sixty and ninety.
Like between sixty and ninety. And so the sixty percent estimate was one point two million over the uh, and that, that does incorporate these elements that are they're now designing for. Or are we gonna see another estimate increase when they account for the, the new retaining wall, the additional trees? The M O T required to construct this this roundabout.
Yeah, I don't wanna give you an accurate answer. I you know, the, the, the truth is, I don't know exactly how precisely these, these changes in construction scope are reflected in the sixty percent. I know that they are reflected at least at a you know, sort of unit price level. I mean, obviously, like the, the larger retainers haven't been designed yet. So we because we have retained the structural engineering services to to get all the way through that. But what is known is, you know, the, the change in height and the change in like surface wall area that you can estimate. And, you know, just use these rough averages for what that, that tends to cause. So there's always something you can learn when you get a more detailed design development effort. So I don't know. You know, set expectations about what that, what that ever might reveal about, about cost. But the other thing to consider and I, you know, I hope this also isn't too optimistic thinking on my part, but this, this number that's, you know, cited here, the three point six billion does still have some contingency included, you know, to account for some of, you know, some costs that may yet increase based on next week, we still may not know. So there's some buffer in, in this number towards all that.
Yeah, I just wanted to just say, just quickly, thank you, Eddie, for your, for your candor here. And, and I know we're all aware of this, that Mr. Sylvia inherited this project. And I think it's important for the public to recognize that there were fortunately, there may have been some things that were dropped in the past and Mr. Sylvia has been very frank with us about where we have to kind of catch up. I think this discussion is a really important one to have. But I wanna make sure that it's not a reflection of Mr. Sylvia's skills. I have utmost confidence in his ability and in bringing this to us is is a testament to his character, in my opinion. So I would just say thanks, Mr. Sylvia.
Yes, just just also express my appreciation to Mr. Sylvia. That the level of detail that you bring to us is a new thing for us from somebody in your role. And they, you know, don't wanna sort of get into it because you never wanted, wouldn't do that, but but I think that there was a lot of wishful thinking in the past about this project and it was sketched out in pretty broad terms. And I don't think it got into the detail that was necessary. And either in discussions with council or in the scope of work that was prepared consultant. So I'm not surprised we are where we are today, but I'm very thankful that you're here and doing this good detailed work. Appreciate it. Thank you.
One more question. I'm thinking about designing the roundabout itself. Have we, are we at the place where we've shared the designs with Wash Duck, with King County Metro? Because I just wanna make sure that we're not in a place where all of a sudden Metro objects saying, oh, this doesn't work for our buses or something like that.
So on the Wash Duck front, we have, so there's a, a permanent process you go through with them. They've seen a project at thirty percent, the next design milestone is ninety percent that they review. So yes, they're, they're as integrated as they, they would ordinarily be on a project like this. King County Metro. I wanna call on Jeff because I, I, I know you asked this question in an email to the consultant. I don't know if your memory is any better than mine. I, I, I wanna say yes. Because, because I know we've asked about transit service specifically. I just don't remember exactly what the consultant said about what they've done.
I'm leaning towards yes, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Yeah. It, it has not, it, it has not been, it's not an oversight. We've, I know we've discussed it with them. I'm just, I'm sorry. I don't remember exactly what they've done with them so far. But yeah, there's a lot of stakeholders, especially the utilities. They need of them, you know, that we're coordinating with separately, you know, because all of their stuff has to move, you know, overhead and underground. And private property of this as well. So yeah, the trying to catch as many of those impacted stakeholders as we can.
Okay, so yeah, I'm glad you're on top of it.
I hope I am.
Andy, thank you very much. I will actually take pretty much full responsibility for the one point two million because when I inherited this job or got this job, I took, it's like saying you took over the Mariners and now I can charge to the team that went to playoffs next year. We refilled, retooled the whole Titan team, but that didn't happen overnight. I think we have a lot to learn from you and I hope you feel a bit, John, helping us because there's expertise with that. But I, you know, when I, I'm just gonna say that we had to work our way through, I hired a new coach and from there we fought our way through and I'm very proud of the people we have now, but I when it comes to if I was the smartest guy in the world, I would have known everything, but I didn't. But we're, where we're at now because of, we just, it took a while to make all the changes. So thank you. I hope you get some more sleep. You have a lot of work to do. You know, at some point, look at the score, they're game. Yeah. Oh, I'm not here about that till we get to my sights. We need to go upstairs. Guys, we have a real quite a lengthy meeting tonight. Let's try to stay on topic. Get what we can done. I'd like to be done before midnight. That's the, so let's do the best we can. All right. Thank you. Keep you up there. I'll have Matt looking for your yellow hand. We'll do my best. Oh, adjourned. Thank you, guys.